So you want, you want to know what we've spent the ARPA funds on?
Right.
Okay, yeah, you don't know, your email just, I mean, your letter just asked what the balance was, not what we've spent it on. Okay. So you want to know what we've spent the ARPA funds on?
I should have worded that differently.
That's okay. I'm, I, I just took what you wrote in your letter. You wanted to know the balances of that day.
Well, and that was nice to say.
Yes, so.
Interesting, etc.
You want, you, okay, so you want what ARPA funds have been spent on?
Instead, yep.
Okay.
So that we then have a very clear picture of what's there, not guess.
I mean, I gave you what the balance was, so that's what's there.
I know, but what's been spent is like.
Yeah, and I don't even know what you guys have, like, allocated for everything. Yeah, because I don't know.
But how you spend.
Yeah.
Because that's always an interesting thing.
Is it time? Oh, yeah. We're all in here, so.
Okay.
Just call it a course?
No, I don't. Before, I need attention before I call it order. I have a question. Hi, Lizzie, it's nice to see you. I have a question for you right off the bat before we even call it order. One, introduce who you are, but the second part for what it is is housekeeping. What part of parliamentary procedure do you use for housekeeping? Where do you put it?
That would be at board discretion, so that can be seen from here at the beginning or the end at board preference. So if you have a point of procedure that you're concerned about, or if there's a particular element that needs to be addressed, usually sooner the better.
Well, that's what I didn't know, if it was done prior to even starting, before you even opened it up, or.
Well, you need to open the meeting regardless and, and tackle anything, but typically that would be something that you could tackle at the approval of the agenda phase, if there's something that's going to be added.
No, it's nothing that's added, it's just, well, is housekeeping added?
It depends on what to do with housekeeping, I suppose.
Okay. Well, let's start her out then. We'll just start it and figure it out. Then you can let me know if I'm wrong. All right, thank you. Called order. Roll call, please.
Ms. Howe?
I'm wearing a mask. I didn't do it here.
Ms. Butler-Chandler here, Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Benzie?
Here.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Here.
Ms. Kellerman?
Here.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we're on item two, which will be civil reflections, so you'll have your pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Hang on here. I'm not sure whether I add housekeeping to this or not. I have approval of the agenda. But before we do that, I guess, I have some housekeeping, and one of them would be to introduce our attorney, who's going to be from the firm, which will be here every two weeks that we have. So just stand up and introduce yourself, in case people don't know who you are.
Helen Lizzie Mills, Fannie Schultz for Zeta Groves, one of the partners there. It will not always be me, it's me if, if we can. Obviously, we try to staff it as best we can. If there's specialized needs, then we'll send someone, maybe you'll see Chris Patterson on occasion, or Ryan Kuschel, who you are also familiar with. Today I was available, and it's been a month since I was here, so I thought I would just come say hey.
Oh, we had on the agenda that you're here for a special reason.
That's correct. I'm saying in terms of the staffing, as mentioned in the contract, how we, who will be here will be dependent on availability.
Okay, that was part of the housekeeping that I had, so I don't know if that goes to the agenda or not.
If you would like to ask the question, go for it.
Okay, no, thank you. You're always so immediable. What I, what I needed to know was actually, because I have the copy, is this going to be an addendum to our already contract that we have with you?
Yes, it's a standalone, so the board, and I believe as indicated in there, if the board decides that they would like to discontinue this at any time, that's certainly up to this board's pleasure, as it would always be.
No, I understood that, I just didn't know if you would put this as an appendage to it, to the contract that we already have.
We don't have a specific addendum process, these are both agreements with the township.
Okay, so these are separate.
This is a specialized rate that we worked on with the township to, to address that issue.
Okay, cool. Thank you, that helps, because it has the standard terms of engagement, so that is just a standalone.
Correct, we have, we have a pre-existing engagement letter with the township that had standard terms as well, that is for representation across the board. This is a specialized contract for this particular service of having counsel at your meetings.
Okay. No, that, that helps, thank you. Seems like there was one other thing that I had for you. Chances are I'll remember it and can't say it when the time comes, but that's okay. Whatever it was, it's gone, so thank you.
I'll be there.
Yep, I appreciate that. Okay, approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda submitted.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Anybody have anything that they want to? Nope, guess not, so.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Okay, our next item four is going to be disclosure of conflicts of interest. Doesn't appear that we have any, so our next will be public statements. And again, this is three-minute guys, so we're adhering to that now. Shoot.
Good evening, my name is Judy Gardi, and I'm representing friends at Park Lake tonight. I just would like to thank Marie and the staff that Karen sent last week on our walking audit with the County Road Commission. We started at the community center and walked down to State Road, and we learned a lot, and we had a lot of really engaging and helpful conversations, and there were some really good ideas that were shared about ways to calm the traffic on Park Lake Road, and I really feel that Doug will help us move forward on this, and I, again, just want to express my appreciation. I will also state that I certainly hope that the police department is able to join us in the conversations that come from this in the future, and we're sorry to see that they were probably too busy to join us that night, but would encourage their participation as we move forward.
All right, thank you, Judy. Anybody else? You want to handle that?
Yeah.
Okay. Apparently you're being handled by the clerk for your time, so you got three minutes.
Oh, excellent. Ray Kotke, Park Lake Road. I would just like to say that for the items for action, B, A, the police department in-car body camera proposal, I strongly think that you should approve this, because it's of the utmost importance in this day and age, getting more so each, each day. And also the, the fire department drone program grant application, that would be a very, very valuable asset to our department, especially if they had, you know, thermal capabilities. So, anyway, that was it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You beeping?
No.
Anybody else? Rick, you got three seconds, you got three minutes. Go ahead, shoot. Oh, no, I, I have no idea when it starts. Does it start now?
When you introduce us up there.
Go ahead, shoot.
Okay.
All right.
Rick Curtis, Park Lake Road. I was so delighted to see that we have item item 13E, unfinished business, sidewalks in other place, in other public places, put on the agenda by Superintendent Hildebrandt. I did a little bit of research on this, and I have more information that I'd like to share with you. If I could be allowed to speak during that presentation, I would really appreciate it. And it's something that should help expedite this entire situation. Other than that, I heard that we had a, I'm assuming you guys have been in contact with some folks from the senior center, that we had an outbreak there of COVID?
Not that I'm aware of.
Last Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, there was.
Oh, I had no idea, so apparently.
Yeah, I had heard that, I don't know where I saw that or heard it from, but I forgot about it, and I'd have brought a mask, too.
I wonder.
There's some over there.
There's some here, Rick, if you want to put one on.
Oh, hang on, Cindy.
No, she's fine.
I'm not waiting. Item number 10, treasurer's report. I'm going to make a request, I'm a little confused as to what's going on. This is the second notification that I have received, I'm assuming from the treasurer's office, even though it's not signed. Disposition of outstanding checks. I did speak to Jennifer briefly today. I think this is something that the board should be aware of that is going on. My real question is, I don't know how this has slipped through the cracks for so many years, and why they're not showing up in our audits. We did have them in the audit one time. I do recall it was a deficiency that those checks need to be taken care of one year. So if you could, maybe next week, give a report.
I can see. I don't know why you think it's a deficiency. I mean, our account.
I did not say it was a deficiency, I said in a previous audit, it came in as a deficiency, that we had outstanding checks that were not accounted for, and they needed to be cleared up and taken care of.
And that's what I'm doing right now, because I had some done.
Fabulous.
That's, yeah.
Could you give everybody an update on that, so that they know what's going on? I think the board needs to know. And my real question is, why are these not showing up in the audits? I think that would probably go, well, to you and to Karen both, so, if you could.
It's, I guess it depends on what our audit firm looks at. I don't know.
I know, you haven't been here for an audit.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, yeah, I don't know what the audit, auditors look at.
But I think the board needs to be aware of the amount of money and the amount of checks that have not been cashed over the years. One of these is dated August 11th, 2020. The last paper I got, some of them are 2017, some are 2018. After five years, they should be turned over to the state. I've never been notified, and I would have to think that.
I'm just trying to clean, I'm trying to.
I'm not asking you to answer them, I'm just telling you what.
I'm just trying to clean it up.
Cool, awesome. Could we get a report on that, please?
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay. No takers? All right. We have from the, I don't see anybody from the county, state, federal, or other agencies. Doesn't seem to be, so we'll move on to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda is submitted.
Second.
Any questions? Apparently not. All right.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
All right, we are now on item eight, for those that are following. Approval of the minutes, capital A and capital B, we have two. And I have to make a statement, because I was sorry, I made a mistake, I checked the 17th, so, my mistake. So approval?
What was the mistake?
The mistake? When I was asking the clerk to double-check on whether or not a statement had been made by myself. That was the mistake, so she checked, I checked, and we both checked. It was good, so, all right. So do you want to do them together, or you want to do them separate?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the board meeting of April 17th.
Okay.
End of May 1st.
I second.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes.
All right, item nine, we have approval of vouchers.
I'll make a motion to approve the May 15th, 2023 vouchers as submitted.
Second.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler? Yes, Ms. Howe?
That's got to be typical. Yes. All right, item 10, for those that are following. It's the treasurer's report, there doesn't seem to be any, although we did have a discussion on those, so. Yep, for the next meeting. That's, what, June 3rd? Does that sound right?
I don't know.
Is it June, I think it is.
June 5th.
Thank you, it is 5th. Okay, so we'll look for a report on June 5th. Okay. Committee appointments. Before we do that, I just wanted to make a statement, actually, that between now and the end of the year, I will have approximately, not less than, but maybe more of, for committee appointments. There's about 25 that are up due, due, up, due, due up, at the end of December. So that's an FYI. And there are no committee appointments?
I didn't hear you, you were talking that way. What did you say? No.
Oh, I'm sorry. What I said was, between now and December 31st, I have approximately.
I got that. What was the last thing you said? You have 25 appointments or re.
Or more.
Yeah.
Coming up at the end of the year. And this has committee appointments?
Correct.
Isn't it? Is that what you were?
No, I'm okay, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, oh, that's what you know. I said FYI.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. I didn't understand what it was, okay. Okay, that was 11, so we're on 12. Township committee reports, doesn't appear to be any. Judy? We're all set? Good deal. All right. Item 13, which is unfinished business, introduction and discussion. Apparently there is none. So it looks like for unfinished business, item B, items for action. And apparent I, I knew you were in here somewhere. Police department in-car body cam, body cameras, proposal by the chief of police, which is Gary Smith, and your sergeant. You're there? Okay, good deal. Is there any discussion? Do I need a motion? First I need a motion, then.
I'll make a motion to approve the.
Thank you.
In-car body camera proposal. I have a question.
Look, hang on, we just got a second.
Second.
Okay.
I have, I have a question.
Yes, you can, go ahead.
How does the board want to pay for this? Do we want to pay for this all upfront? Or do you want to pay for this out of the police and fire budget over a five-year period of time? Because you have a couple of choices here.
Are you asking me? Are you asking everybody?
I'm asking the board.
Okay. No, your hand went up first.
Oh, okay.
Trustee Rosecrans.
I think we should pay it off now. We've got the money, funds there.
Where would that come from?
We could even use ARPA funds.
That's why it's important, because I just talked to the treasurer about how much we've spent to this point, regardless of whether it was this year, last year, or the year before, or whenever the ARPAs came in, just so we know what we've got. Because you can't, if you keep little bits, it each time start adding up.
Oh, sure.
Okay. Trustee Fiedwin's Bliss, you had a that reminds me, you had a question?
I think so. Let me ask it, and then we'll see if, if it makes sense. On the memo, Superintendent Hildebrandt, it says that we've got a fund balance in the public safety. Was, were you giving us that as an FYI? Was it your recommendation to use that?
It was my recommendation to use that, and I was letting you know that there was $278,000 in that public safety fund at this time.
Didn't we put that into the budget for this year?
We did, but it's based on the amount that's available at that time, that we make the transfer.
But we're counting on it, we're counting on that 200, I think we budgeted 275, 613, assuming it would come out of fund balance.
Correct, but there's also fund balance that will be coming back into there after the audit is complete, which it is.
Do you think it'll be another 138,000?
Yes, it will be.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, so it's 275 plus 135. What is that?
278 plus approximately, I think, another 250.
Is that?
When you receive the audit on June 20th, it will be covered there, but that's the approximate amount that was left over from 2022.
Was 200 and some odd thousand?
Over $200,000.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm glad you asked that question.
So I'm proposing you use fund balance, not ARPA.
Right.
But it's certainly this board's, board's pleasure.
Is there, is there a date on that?
A date on what? I'm sorry.
On the use?
No, it remains in fund balance as long as it's not allocated.
I mean, when they need it, when they get it. They won't get it until.
They need their cameras now.
Well, I know they need them now, but that's, I thought you said it wasn't till November?
That's when the installation would be by contract.
Right. Well, when you complete a contract, that means, are you using the cameras before that time? I didn't think so. Okay. So we're looking, and this 200,000 that's coming in for the fund balance would be in our 2024? Or 2023?
It's being reported from 2022 in 2023, so it would be available now.
Okay, so we have it right now?
Essentially.
Okay, so, okay.
I would imagine that, like most large-scale contracts, would probably require a 50% deposit to move forward with the contract, and then the balance due when the, everything else is installed.
Okay, got it. Yes, trustee.
I just want to clarify, are you saying an additional $250,000 are coming in?
Correct.
Above and beyond the 275?
Right.
Right. Which would certainly cover.
What's the number? I don't, I don't have it with me. 137.
36,000? But I could be reading it wrong.
No, no, I'm sorry, it, it was a draft.
May I approach the bench?
Just a snapper, you're okay.
No, I think you're correct. It looks like at the end of 2022, 315,378. My apologies.
315?
315, 378.
078, okay. So we have more than enough to cover in a fund balance?
Well, except for.
What this is asking for? Yes.
Except for we, we budgeted in this year's budget for 275,000 of that.
Okay.
Karen, how are you feeling about?
How do you have a fund balance of?
I'm sorry?
Maybe, maybe that's a question for staff. How do you figure what we budget and what's the fund balance?
Well, we used.
Are you combining them?
Fund balance of 2021, we used in the budget for 2023 at approximately 275,000, because the fund balance as of the end of '21 was 278. So in order to transfer less money from general fund, ultimately general fund balance, into the public safety fund, we decided to take the money out of the public safety fund balance first.
Who decided?
We did.
You did?
The board, yes.
So that leaves us, what number for the fund balance?
If we use the money, 177,713.
That's what you've got, okay.
If you took this project out of that money.
Right. So if you take this project out of the money, does that affect the budget? I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Unless there, I haven't looked at the numbers lately, but are you running ahead in, in the public safety budget?
I don't even try not to look until at least six months.
Okay.
So basically, what we're saying with these large numbers that you're tossing around, we do or we do not have the money for this project in the fund balance.
I believe the answer is both.
Okay.
We do have it, but we have budgeted in this year's budget that we would use most of it.
Okay, that's what I thought.
But if we're running ahead on the budget, we could not use all of it.
Okay.
And it's just hard to tell at this point. We're not even halfway through the year.
So asking for it, because you really won't have it till November anyway, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
The longer we wait, obviously that hate gets pushed back.
The longer we wait, oh, you mean for, not to.
To sign the contract.
Put yourself in that queue. Gotcha, nope, I trustee.
Karen, how, how confident are you that this meets the threshold of being able to use ARPA funds on?
I did not look at that, honestly, but it, equipment like this has been deemed appropriate. I didn't look specifically for this.
My reading of it, and I am not an expert anyway, it was, it was really convoluted. That's probably a judgmental term, but I found it convoluted how it broke out where you could use police and fire equipment in that one pager you sent out, I don't know, it was like back in 2021. I just want to make sure if we were to use that, it, it would stand up, you know, to any compliance issues.
I don't have the money, I don't have the handout with me.
Well, I was carrying it around with me for about two weeks, and now I seem to have misplaced it.
So are we saying at this point, we do or we do not have it? And the answer for that is maybe.
Here's what I might suggest.
Please do.
You are not asking us for a budget amendment right now, right?
I am not.
So I would say, if we agree, we would spend it out of one of these pots, either fund balance or out of the public safety fund balance or ARPA, all of which we have money in. We could approve the project tonight. Karen could bring a budget amendment forward to us with her recommendation where we should put it.
Why would you need an amendment if you have a fund balance?
You still, we still haven't budgeted to spend this money.
So we would still get the final say on which of those pots to put it in, but then it would give Karen some time to figure out where that might fit best. And it still allow us to move forward tonight.
Right, whether that comes out of '21, '22, or '23.
Well, all of those are together, '21 and '22, that's all one fund balance now.
Okay, so there's two.
I think, I think he's saying whether it's ARPA, or whether it's public safety fund balance, or.
Public safety, because ARPA is not considered a fund balance.
He's, but he's saying, I think he's saying, I could check and see if it's available to use ARPA funds on.
And ARPA is a fund balance at this point, because we collected the money in a different fiscal year, and it's now.
Well, we collected the other half, didn't we get the other half this year?
Not that I'm aware of.
It was all, it all came last year.
So we got the 1.3 in '22?
Yeah.
I'll call the question.
I'm sure you, okay. So that is an item for action.
I called the question.
Yes, you did.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
We still don't know where it's coming from, do we? Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.[1796.81]
Yes.
Thank you.
What kind of funny order are you going in today?
I know, I missed, I missed you.
Random.
Okay, we're on 13, Items for Action, small letter B, Fire Department Drone Program.
He is not here tonight, he's ill.
Oh, I hope he doesn't have COVID. Oh, he does have COVID. Okay.
No. Assistant Fire Chief. But I would recommend, because of this grant, that we allow permission to apply for the Granger Corporate Giving Program for grant funding to implement the drone program.
Okay, I have a question with that.
I move... Move approval of the authorization for the superintendent to apply for the Fire Department's drone program through the, you said, Granger? Granger program.
Second.
All right, I have a quick question with it. I wasn't sure when I read through this if in fact that grant covers, you know, maybe you would know, maybe Kevin, obviously not here, if the grant covers the four firemen that are going to be trained to use? Okay.
Yes, that was contained in his total price.
Well, that's, like, since the equipment was the five to seven, but it didn't say anything about training.
I, I do believe that that was part of it.
Okay, so the grant is part of the training. Okay.
If I'm wrong on that, I will let you know.
Well, that's an expenditure. That's what I guess I was... Okay. So we have, any other questions? Nope. Nope, go ahead.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
That sounds like an excellent program. I just wasn't sure whether that training was included in the grant. Because it's not, I thought he did say that, but it wasn't...
Yeah, on page, on page six, it says, um, the second part, second paragraph down there, test preparation programs for cost and for free.
Okay. Well, $175 per person, but it doesn't say that's covered in the grant. That's, that was my only, only question. Thank you.
I will try to get clarification from him for you, but I do believe it's included.
Yeah, that would be, that would be really helpful. Okay, we are on 13, Unfinished Business, Small C, Items for Action, Board of Water and Light Transfer of Interest by the Bath Charter Township.
I would, thank you.
I think you should fund it to me on this one, and that's okay. All right, thank you so much. What's that?
I said, that's what it says.
Yes. So I'm here today to discuss with you that our office has reviewed a significant number of property records pertaining to an issue that was raised by BWL actually back in the fall. BWL approached the township seeking the township's consent and action on certain property transfers. And of course, the township and through the superintendent's office requested our review to say, what are we transferring and why would we be doing that? In our review of the records dating back to, in some cases, back to 1992 relating to the White Hills Lakes North Limited Partnership Agreement, so we're talking a great number of years at this point. What we can see and, and determine on behalf of the township is that there are, there's at least one property and a handful of parcels upon which there are wells that were not properly documented transfers at the time that BWL took over the township system. So the BWL agreement did in fact provide that we were to transfer all materials, make sure that we had transferred all access, and assured access to those properties that had wells, for instance, as well as any facilities that we had. At the time, it appears that although a great amount of documentation was appropriately conveyed, a lot of the action has of course been ongoing for some time. We've been accurately functioning under that BWL agreement. It looks to me as if BWL did in fact go back to their records and find, hey, I don't actually have a deed or some kind of a quitclaim document from the township on these parcels for which there are wells and a single parcel for which there is, is access. So we have reviewed that. I can give you a more detailed summary of the history, but I, I didn't want to make everybody's eyes glaze over, because there is approximately 310 pages of documentary evidence that goes with that. So I, I won't dive into all of that right now. It is the recommendation of the Township Attorney's Office that we do work with BWL to quitclaim the township's interests in certain properties, the, the 6050 Coleman Road, as well as locations that are in Meadowbrook condominiums, Timber Ridge condominiums, and Chateau in the Pine condominiums. There are parcels in those condominiums that have wells on their access site. There is some question whether we ever actually had any legitimate transferred rights to us in the first place as to those wells on those condominium properties. But at, in any rate, the, the legal aspect here is that BWL is looking to check a box on their, to make sure they have all of their documents. And the township, by executing a quitclaim deed, is not promising that you have any particular right. We are essentially saying, whatever we have, you can have to it. And it is our review, again, after looking at those 300-plus documents, we are, we are satisfied and can recommend to the township that BWL's ask is legitimate, and we can recommend moving forward with that.
I'm waiting to ask my question once. Go ahead, trustee.
I, I think I got it. Help me if I don't.
Oh, wait a minute. Hang on to your question. Do we have a demotion?
That's what I was going to make.
Okay.
I move that we issue a quitclaim deed in, for the township's interest in 6347 Timberview, 16670 Ostway, 16, is it Austin? I thought it's Austin Way. 16893 Cedar Brook.
And 6050 Coleman.
I was just going to ask that.
It's in the paragraph above.
And 6050 Coleman. I was getting to that.
Not me this time, guys.
I'll second that.
All right, any questions? I think my question was already answered, because even though it mentioned it in the first paragraph, it wasn't listed as one of, so there's actually four sites they have, or more than four?
There are wells located on the, the first three properties, the trustee Funes Bliss included, and then the 6050 Coleman Road. This was the original property that was, was transferred back in 1992 that sort of started the historical record on all of this.
So it's just those four pieces?
Correct. And again, as to those in the condominiums, not the 6050 Coleman Road specific property, really what you're quitclaiming is any access that you have, because we don't have evidence that you actually own it in fee or anything like that. It is more of an access issue. If you dig into those, everybody knows master deeds to condos are just a ton of fun to be in.
Right.
If you dig into those, you would find that some of them specifically reference the wells and some of them don't, and they sort of talk around them, which is part of the question that BWL is trying to just close the door on.
Okay, so basically, it's kind of an open-ended request that we're asking, is whatever we have as the township for BWL Board Water and Light to come in and access. Is that correct?
Correct. Because we don't own those parcels. We, we really would have had, just had access to those wells in the first place.
So I think you need to add to your amendment any other properties that Bath Township has, that BWL has an interest in.
These are...
So it's not just these four?
It is, it is, those, those, those listed are the only ones that they have requested, and those would be the only one. I would not want you to make a going-forward blank, because that would make me very nervous for, for all of you.
Then, you want to, should I repeat his motion, or do you want to repeat his motion?
To issue a quitclaim deed for, for the properties at 6347 Timberview, 16670 Austin Way, 16893 Cedar Brook, and 6050 Coleman Road.
Okay. Any questions? I think we're good.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we're on 13D, small d, the Clinton County Road Commission contract for Hawk Hollow.
Thank you. You had previously indicated this was what you chose to, one of the projects you chose to undertake this year. At the time that I brought it before you, the cost was $522,500. The updated cost to complete this project, which we do have in the budget, is $619,082.50.
And that is in the budget?
It is in the budget. I have included the cost share on the front page of that contract, so that you could see the original budget, the amended budget, and then the cost share from the Clinton County Road Commission.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the Clinton County Road Commission contract for Hawk Hollow subdivision.
Second.
Any questions?
I do.
Oh, trustee Funes Bliss?
So we would still, if I'm reading this right, have about $14,000 in the budget after this?
Correct.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Roll call.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes.
Okay, we are on E 13, small e, the update of Chapter 58 Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Places. And I think Rick asked me... Did both of you want to speak? Oh, I'm sorry, I saw the hand go up. Don't do that to me. Ooh. Now I'm jealous.
First, I have a question for you, Karen, and I think you can answer this. Do you know if, is the the Safe Routes to School, is, is that a federal grant? Or is that a Michigan grant, or?
I, I'm unclear if it's federal. I know it has to come through the Clinton County Road Commission, because it, it involves Act 51 money. So I do believe it's a state program.
What, I'm sorry, what's Act 51?
It's money that is granted to the local units for local roads.
From?
The state.
Okay, so it is state?
I do think it's state, yes.
It comes from the Michigan Fitness Foundation.
The reason I ask, most concrete companies are going to know this ahead of time. But before you guys put the money into this, you, you should, you need to know that... Well, let me ask you, are, are, is anyone familiar, I'm sure Joe is, are you familiar with prevailing wage? Okay. And yeah, Ryan is. So those of you who aren't aware of prevailing wage, the state of Michigan and the federal government requires you to pay competitive wages that are competitive with union wages when you do something like this. Now, for instance, if the DDA did this project way back when, we're not, the DDA wasn't required to pay, doesn't require the contractors to pay a union comparable wage, which they call a prevailing wage. So that's going to up the prices of just about everything that you do. Now, any, any concrete company that is a union shop, they are already paying that wage, so you don't have to worry about them. But, but if you want to get somebody local, chances are they're not going to be a union shop. And they'll probably, well, you, you'll need to let them know that it, it is state of Michigan funded, so that they can figure out what is fair to them, because otherwise you're going to end up with bids that they just can't do, and then there's penalties for that sort of thing.
Can I interject, please? The Clinton County Road Commission is handling this project, so they're, and I appreciate you pointing it out.
They're handling the Safe Routes to School?
They're the ones that are handling the Safe Routes to School.
Well, I'm sure they know. Okay, the other thing that was in question, I'm assuming you put this on the agenda because you were talking about upgrading our ordinance? There have been no upgrades to the national or Michigan codes for sidewalks since Act 8 of 1973, and if everybody grabs a pencil, I'll tell you, it's MCL 125.1361.
That must be one devil of a code.
Bath's sidewalk ordinance is Chapter 58, adopted in 1998. And then there was ordinance 31.62, which was an update of October 13th, 2009. So the reason I'm bringing this up is I highly doubt that there's any reason to bother the Planning Commission or even the, even the planner. I mean, you can certainly have him verify these things, but if that should tell you everything you need to know, there's no reason that we can't hit the ground running right now with it. And that's a big plus, because there's no sense in delaying another two months before you start getting bids and find out you can't get anything done until next year.
It was suggested at the time that we were doing the Safe Routes to School that we have our ordinance looked at and updated.
Okay.
Well, all you got to do is verify, because I...
Well, that's, that's the question. Well, I shouldn't be doing this.
I mean, don't take my word for it. I found this online. And what would you update it to?
That would be for the Planning Commission to look at.
Right.
I mean, we, we refer a lot of items to the Planning Commission for them to look at and make a recommendation to us.
They're going to supersede the state and the, and the national code?
That is, okay. Hang, hang on a second. We're going to need to have a motion to accept it, and then we're going to need a second. Then we can have more of a discussion. So what we're looking at, if, if I'm understanding this, what we're looking at is to send this to the Planning Commission. And with that, we'll send the assistant of our town planner, who was always there anyway, and our ordinance officer. Is that correct? Am I understanding what this is? Okay, so I need a motion?
I'll make a motion to send to the Planning Commission, Chapter 58 Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion from what?
Yes, I had a question, I'm sorry.
No, that's what it's for.
Karen, when you said it was recommended that we take this up, or the Planning Commission take this up, was that by the Safe Routes to School Committee or the funder?
Uh, it was the funder, and then recommended through the funder to former trustee Jason Almory G.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else got a question? Because I do, of course. Nobody, you're the, okay. My questions with this, now hang in there, because you might have to answer this. When you're talking about the DDA funds, you're talking about, in addition to the Safe Routes to School. So your DDA, DDA area goes from Webster Road up to Slate, correct? Sorry about that. I'm just going, you know, one way, not the thickness of it, not the width of it, just north to south kind of thing. So if it's going to that, that means that the DDA money can be used for anything within that area? Is, am I looking at that correctly? So when it goes to the Planning Commission, they understand that the Safe Routes to School can go outside if that's what they do, which I'm not sure that's what they do. And I think there's a point well taken timeframe-wise. Do we know, do we have any idea? Now, Ryan, you'd have an idea. Where would this land in their list of things to do?
Well, it's currently not in that list, so I don't want to speak on behalf of the chair, but I imagine if the board is asking the Planning Commission to do something, that they could prioritize it for us.
Okay, so we could do that. Okay. So part of this acceptance would be to request that the Planning Commission look at it. that the Planning Commission look at it in a timely fashion, in other words, like yesterday? Put it at the top of their list?
Well, I'm on the Planning Commission, so I'm not going to say that.
But you're there as a representative.
They cannot look at it yesterday.
I understand that. That was a tongue-in-cheek kind of thing, which you're not supposed to be doing that. So, seriously, we could look at that and say the Planning Commission, direct them to look at it as soon as possible. But even that doesn't sound, as soon as possible could be very vague.
I forget when the timeline was for this to get started. Do we have some time?
2024.
Oh.
For Safe Routes to School, 2024.
All right.
That's when the first grant comes in, correct?
So, we actually can't do anything for a while, so.
Well, that's, that's what I guess I'm wondering if.
But that doesn't mean we can't do the sidewalks on Main Street.
Well, that's what I guess I'm questioning is to, we're asking them to take over all of this, to do Safe Routes to School in addition to the DDA monies, which, whatever that is at this time, to do sidewalks.
My understanding was we're just asking them, them to update the ordinance.
Correct. But this ordinance, that's what I guess, the sidewalks was part of their plan, part of their request. So, this actually takes in part of what they'd be looking at. So, as you're looking at to update it, whether it be with the Michigan Code or the National Code, whichever they look at it. And of course, that can be done by our planner anyway, because all he'd have to do is just compare this to what's in your national or what's in your state. So, that really wouldn't take much. So, the Planning Commission is being brought in because.
This board often assigns things to the Planning Commission to take a look at.
No, I understand that.
So, I figured either that this board is going to do it, or they would assign it to the Planning Commission.
No, I get, and that's why I'm asking, because I don't want it to go another year, year and a half. I guess that's what I'm thinking. If we're looking at sidewalks, I would hate to think that would go till 2024.
Well, the Safe Routes to School is in 2024.
Correct.
That's non-negotiable.
That is non-negotiable.
The DDA, using the DDA funds for additional sidewalk repairs or replacement, that would be up to this board to decide whether that's this year or that would coincide with that project in 2024.
Because that's not what this says?
No. This, this is just the ordinance on how they're maintained, who is responsible for repairing them, taking care of them, keeping the snow off of them.
Okay. So, without this update, we could still use the funds, the DDA funds, without this update?
If that, yes, if this board decides to do that, yes.
Okay.
This is really just about the maintenance of and how we use the ordinance.
And that's what I'm a little concerned about it being, if they're looking at it from the standpoint of Safe Routes to School, that isn't until 2024, minimum. And that, that I have a concern. Yes, that's, okay.
One other thing you might want to check as well, I got my information that Safe Routes to School didn't overlap with what the DDA had planned.
Correct.
I'm not positive that's true because I haven't seen the Safe Routes to School, to School map. So, if there is an overlap there, then just don't do that area, just do the area that the DDA had planned. That you can do right now, and you don't need engineering, you don't need, there's no engineering needed to pull up a 10-foot area of sidewalk that's crumbled and gone bad and put in a new one. It'll give, it'll give the township something right now.
All right, can we, can we give this to the Planning Commission for their sidewalks, other public places, you know, in your streets, to update this ordinance minus the DDA funds? Or this wouldn't have anything to do, can we do the DDA without?
An ordinance is an ordinance, so it doesn't matter.
Okay, that's kind of.
But I can guarantee you that, well, I guarantee you that there should be no changes unless you plan on, this is a federal level, this is a state level. Unless you plan on being up here somewhere, that, but then, then you're asking for more problems.
Okay. Okay, I think I have a handle on that.
Did anybody need the numbers that I wrote down for you, that I called out earlier to those ordinances?
No, because this is an only ordinance that we're asking for the Planning Commission to look at.
Well, I understand that, but this verifies that there hasn't been an update, so there's nothing to really change. That's how simple this could be. But we know that some people need to make work for their departments.
Okay, would you read that back again, the amendment, what we were looking to do?
Hi, how are you doing?
I'm doing very well, thank you.
Okay, good. I'll call the question.
Well, the question being is to restate your motion.
Okay.
Because I think it needs to be changed.
I'd like to make a motion to update the Charter, Chapter 58 Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Places.
Okay.
And send it to the Planning Commission.
Didn't you already make that motion?
She wanted it repeated.
Yeah, I wanted it repeated. That was.
I was really.
Wouldn't do that to you. No, I just needed to have it, no, I just needed to have it repeated so that we're all on the same plane as to what we're asking. But this, this includes, what this letter is including is the DDA funds along with Safe Routes to School. So. I know, that's not the motion. That's, okay.
And Joe, you wanted it with the assistance of the township planner and the ordinance compliance officer, right?
That's correct.
Yep, that's, but you didn't say, so we're eliminating the DDA funds?
I'm leaving the, this is just about this going to the Planning Commission. Does that have anything to do with the DDA funds at all at this time?
Well, that's, okay, no, I understand. So, this motion deals with just Safe Routes to School, or it just deals with definitions. It doesn't even deal with Safe Routes. Okay. Just the ordinance itself. Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Feumans Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's, okay, so we will follow through with that. All right, thank you. All right, new business, number 14, for those that are following. Item A, capital A, items for introduction. And this is, again, is a fire department. I hope somebody, how long is he going to be out?
He should be back this week.
Okay. So, this one is a fire department, Lucas, AR, CPR.
Correct.
The device purchase.
Yes. The township currently, the Bath Township Fire Department currently has one Lucas that's in operation at this time, and that was paid for by Fire Department Association Funds for us to have that equipment. This request is asking for two more of those, and with the cost of that, they're asking to use the opioid settlement funds, which is in the amount of $18,574.52, as well as public safety fund balance to support this project. Some statistics that were shared with me today, because Kevin wasn't going to be here, was since the first device was put into use, they have used it 30 times. And of those 30 times, five people have survived.
Even if one does.
Since January, I would agree with you completely. Since January 2021, approximately 20% of our calls have been simultaneous, meaning we have been dispatched and on one call, and they receive a second call. What they are hoping is that they have multiple units in place so that when any call comes in, there isn't just one to go around, that there are multiples to go around and hopefully save lives in Bath Township.
All right, is there a motion? Because I have a question, of course.
This is for introduction and discussion.
Oh, okay. Well, good, I can ask my question without.
Yes.
So, I wanted to put the motion out there first. My question would be, the two of these, maybe you would know this, it's not really, if the opiate, opiate. Drugs settlement fund is $18,000. And you're talking about the public safety fund balance of $38,762 and some change to support the project. So, we would take the $18,000 from the 38? So, we'd have.
We'd take $18,000 from 57. The total cost is 15, $57,337.8.
Which is those two additional pieces.
For two pieces of equipment.
So, there's only $18,000.
That is what we received this year, yes.
Okay. So, that's subtracted from the 57.
Correct.
And then.
Thirty-eight, seven.
Then the public safety fund balance is the 38, seven.
Correct.
Okay. So, between those two, well, I should have done this. Sorry, guys.
It's in the paragraph, I believe, for you.
For the total?
Yes.
Between the two?
Yes.
You add the two, and then what's the 57?
Well, that's what I guess, isn't that interesting that that equals the same thing? Okay. So, if we're requesting 57, and we're taking the opiate, and we're taking the safety fund balance, so that eliminates the fund balance for public safety. That means for law enforcement, no, you're shaking your head, no. What does that mean?
If I'm understanding this correctly, that was the amount that he was requesting to come from fund balance. That's not the balance.
That's not the balance.
That's not the balance of fund balance.
Okay, so this, so he's requesting.
That's what he wants to use from that fund balance.
Okay. So, that would equal probably pretty close, or it doesn't equal the $57,337, the cost of those.
Yep.
Okay. Is there other public safety fund balances that we're using, like for law enforcement?
It's, it's all the same fund balance. Any money that is not used in a year by police or fire goes into the public safety fund balance.
Yeah, that's still, so how much is left once this is used? And this would be in 2023's fund balance or 2022's?
It's just one pot of money. So.
Yeah.
I don't know what you're asking.
I'm asking, is it the fund balance for 2022 or 2023? What budget's that coming out of?
It's a 2023 budget.
Okay.
But it's the amount that's left as of December 31, 2022.
Of this coming year, what's left in 2023?
What's left, 20, December 31 of 2022.
Okay.
December 31st, excuse me.
Okay. And that's the same fund balance?
Yes.
With the cams and the whole, okay.
But if it's similar to that, if you're interested in using ARPA money, I could see if this qualifies for ARPA money.
Okay. Why don't you do that?
Okay.
Let's, let's look at that. Okay. Is there any other questions? Doesn't seem to be. Okay. So, now we are on B, 14 new business, items for introduction, B, public administrative assistant position. Any questions?
I, I would invite Chief Smith up to the podium.
Thank you. I wasn't sure he was here to do that. You're very quiet.
Gary Smith, chief of police. You want me to start, Karen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What you have before you is Administrative Assistant Kristi Colby is currently our only office staff that we have. She does everything. She prepares the packets for the courts, the prosecutors. She does all the video, all the FOIA, all the redaction, organizes everything, orders everything. She's a do-it-all. And in the past, since December, Karen and I have been having conversations that in the future, we're going to need an additional person up front to keep, keep her head above water. That was no, you know, we knew it was coming. But unfortunately, like about a month ago, she took off for some family affairs. And we quickly realized that when she's gone, nobody knows her job. I mean, we can get things done slowly, but it just stacks up. And then, and of course, when she comes back, it's all stacked up. So, when she takes a week's vacation, there's nobody that can do all of her job. You can get, we can copy some warrants, get them up to the prosecutor's office. But now that's not even, now they're not even copying things. Everything is electronic. So, we're asking for an additional office staff to keep her head above water for all the FOIA requests. I think the, the news just put out last, what, two weeks ago, the increase from 2021 to 2023 for videos, FOIA requests is up 280-some percent. I think it was 280 percent, or, I may already say we get FOIAs, and we have FOIAs every week on our desk.
Any questions? Trustee Rosecrans?
How many hours are you, you think you need for this position?
Full-time.
Full-time?
Yeah. It's currently, when Kristi is gone, I don't know what she gets for vacation time, how many months a week she gets. But when she's gone, the last chief and I both try to keep the office open for walking complaints and phone calls. It's just not possible to do all the time. So, oftentimes, when she's gone, we just close the front office down. And subsequently, when she comes back after being gone for a week, all the same work is still there for her to catch up on. So, she's never completely caught up. This has been a long time coming. It just was made more evident last month when she was gone for a week and a half, how critical it is.
Yes, go ahead, Kristi.
I've got quite a few questions.
Good.
Do you, I see the other part of the proposal is to make, I'm assuming it's Kristi the office manager. Do you see that as a permanent change, permanent beyond when, say, if Kristi were to leave us, that would still be an office manager position?
I would see it as that way. Somebody, you know, they have two people and have nobody in charge, and it would be a good thing. Putting, you know, moving forward from this, if it got approved, I mean, you're asking Kristi to do a lot more than she's already doing now, to train somebody. So.
Would you be requesting an increase in Kristi's pay, then?
I'm sure I would, yes, for the increase to work what she's going to have to do.
Will you have distinct duties between the two, office manager and administrative assistant?
Yes. Obviously, the goal is to get somebody else trained up to her standard, get all their licenses that she has, and the credentials that she has. So, when she's gone, that individual can do the same job she has. But ultimately, they'll have divided jobs when they're both there.
Would you see them at the same pay rate?
I would not.
Even if we replace Kristi in the future? You'd see them as like a different, I don't know what we call them here, bands in our pay rate?
I would say we would always want somebody in charge of the clerical. So, if, whether it's Kristi, if eventually when she retires, if it's her replacement, et cetera.
And you are interested in doing this now, not as part of the 2024 budget process?
Nothing was more, more clear as when she was gone. And it was literally a crisis. We're already short-staffed as it is, and a lot of things she does, we cannot do because we don't have token or declarations to do them. So, we were literally down to a copying machine and running them up to the prosecutor's office.
In the past, I know we have discussed maybe sharing some office capacity with the fire department.
Correct.
Do you think that's a possibility here? Or do you think you've got 40 hours fully for you, your department, excuse me?
For sure, for the first year, we will have 40 hours, just because things need to be caught up, files need to be purged, et cetera. Going forward, I guess we'll have a better understanding. There's so much going on right now. Everything's converting over to paper files. Thank God we're still able to do that, because we got by when she was gone for a week and a half. But everything's moved to electronic format and encryption, et cetera. I know all that stuff's supposed to save us time. Sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't. So, I guess we'll have a better understanding when we're all on board with all this. All the new electronic stuff the prosecutor's office is doing, the courts are doing.
Last question. Did you, I'm sorry if I missed it, is there a cost estimate in here?
There's not at this time.
Do you have one, or roundabout even?
We could prepare one for you for the next meeting.
Okay.
The 40 hours that you're talking about. The forty hours that you're talking about, if her granddaughter's not sick again, where will you house this full-time position? Because I'm assuming from this ASSU and me kind of thing, from this description, and from what you're saying, you would like to have forty hours, as soon as you can get forty hours, for an individual, correct?
Correct.
And, and you also stated that there are things that you can't do, that she's trained to do?
There's many things. The state mandates she have training.
Right.
Be certified, have rights to a token, to access their systems. She's the only one that has that.
Ah, so you don't have access to the system?
A few systems we don't have access to, correct.
Okay. I didn't know that. That's, that's a good piece. So with her, because I'll dovetail with what Trustee Phoebe Bliss said. Initially, when this discussion took place in twenty-twenty-two, it had to do with fifty percent, in other words, twenty hours for you and twenty hours for the fire department.
Correct.
So now, because you've found that this is much more difficult for you to deal if she's not there. But if this doesn't happen again, where she's not taking the week and a half off, the advantage of having someone there, forty hours, would be to transfer paper to electronic? Is that what we're, is that what you're thinking, or not?
Well, we're always gonna have the issue when she's on vacation, and she's allowed to take vacation. And I would encourage her to take vacation, despite her loyalty to us, for sure. But, so we're always catching up when she's gone. There's nobody to do her job when she is gone, so it's never gonna stop.
Ah, okay.
And, you know, moving forward, I think it, rather than be in a crisis every time she takes a day off, or, you know, is off for whatever reason.
Right.
And, you know, you mentioned sharing with the fire department. Certainly, the first year will be organized chaos for a lot of learning.
I get it.
But I think once we get stabilized, and then we'll have a better understanding, you know, if there is hours available for certain, we're happy to help out what other department.
So when she takes a vacation, you guys stop? You don't function?
Or I try to run the front desk, and I can, I'm here to tell you, I can answer a phone. There's not a whole lot of organization getting done up there.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in, you know, it's, it's not fair to the residency.
So a full-time, do you have a housing for where this, hang on a second, where this employment status? So it's a, it's an FLSA?
It'd be adjacent to her desk, if that's what you're asking. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have file cabinets.
Oh, so you'd have two of them sitting there?
Correct.
Forty hours, okay, got it. Okay. Nope. That helps immensely, thank you.
Most other jurisdictions around either have either two office staff or three office staff, so.
Okay.
I think we're the last of the, our department, our size, of one person.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it. That helps. Okay. We're on, what, fourteen B? Is that what that is? Hang on, I'll make sure I'm in the right spot, so I don't put you in the wrong spot. Fourteen B, well, fourteen new business, capital B, items for action. And this one deals with the James Cousin Memorial Park Cupola preservation.
Thank you. We also have tonight, members of the museum committee with us, and Bruce Hart specifically, worked on getting the proposal for this work. I would invite him to share, because he was on site when, yeah, he is.
Good evening, everybody. As mentioned, my name is Bruce Hart, and I'm on the Bath School Museum Committee. We also have several other members.
You do?
Sue Beck here is our chair, we have Kate, Chris, and, and Ray here as well. As, as all of you probably know, the cupola is the only surviving physical structure of the Bath Consolidated School to survive yet today. It survived a bombing, it survived a transfer to the, to the James Cousin School, and it's been sitting ever since in the James Cousin Park for just about one hundred years. Over that period of time, it has been repaired by people in the community to the best of their ability. But today, it's in badly need of some professional help to ensure that it's around for another hundred years. And so we have contracted with a professional historian, if you will, a, a, a construction company that only works on projects of historical significance. And that's Kleppinger Construction, located out of Howell, Michigan. And they've done a multitude of projects in the Detroit area, Grand Rapids area, and just recently finished up a Frank Lloyd Wright House out in Oakhamus. And I couldn't tell you a Frank Lloyd Wright House, if it jumped and out of it, it wouldn't work with me, but I take it it's a pretty big deal. Anyway, they were recommended to us by the MSU Museum, and we made contract, or contact with them last year, and eventually signed a contract, and have initiated that contract with a one thousand dollar payment. And they will begin construction sometime in June, when they finish up the projects that they're currently working on. The remainder of the contract is an additional thousand dollars, and that's what we're here tonight to ask you for, your kind participation, if you would, in helping us out with that additional one thousand dollars to ensure that the cupola will be maintained in the, in the status that it deserves to be, and be good for the next one hundred years, so. That's where we are, and we thank you for your help on this, what we believe is a very important project. Questions?
I have a question. Go ahead, Andrew.
It seems like such a steal for just two thousand dollars.
He has not said this, but he's been doing this type of work for forty years. He loves historical buildings. He knows the story of the Bath School bombing, and I think he's doing it at cost.
That would make sense.
Wow.
Because I thought the same thing.
Yeah.
That seems a little low. Go here. Yes. Trustee Rosecrans.
Are we getting close to putting something over the top of it? Protect it, or?
Well, that will be the next phase of, of what we will be doing on the Bath School Museum. And I don't think we're quite ready to announce the fundraising drive. Close. But the, the goal is to build a building which would house the cupola. And we would like to have that completed by the one hundredth anniversary, which would be May eighteenth, nine, May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-seven. So the answer is yes.
Twenty-seven. That was twenty-seven? I thought it was twenty-six, but it's twenty, twenty-two-seven? Okay. Another question? Go ahead, trustee.
Did the thousand dollars you all put down come out of your fundraising account?
That's.
Yes.
That's what I would, thank you. That was one of mine. I have another one. When it says currently, there's twenty thousand approved by us, by the Board of Trustees. What was that? Where does that twenty thousand come from?
The DDA fund.
Oh.
It was to be for the architectural plans of that building.
Okay. And that hasn't been used yet?
No.
But we approved it out of the DDA funds, okay. Okay.
Can I follow up on that, Ray?
Oh, no, please do.
The, do you expect to use that twenty thousand dollars we allocated this year?
Uh, I think, and I deferred, Chris, do you have a comment on that? What the current status of the architect?
The plans are being drawn as we speak. The architects, THA, is just in communication. They're getting the, the plans drawn up, and they'll have some preliminary drawings for us this week. And we can, our, our whole goal was to kick off our fundraising event at our Golden Alumni reunion this Saturday at the middle school and at the auditorium. But yes, we are gonna have some plans to display this weekend.
Do you think it'll be the full twenty?
No. So she, the whole, the whole amount was fifteen thousand dollars for the initial design plans. That's gonna get us going to kick off our fundraising plan. But then.
Could you come up?
There's gonna be another full, like, like a full set.
Construction.
Can you go to the podium?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Otherwise, I have to repeat everything, so people can hear it, I just soon.
Sorry about that. Chris Ackerman. Uh, yeah, so we are, she's doing a preliminary set. That's the preliminary set, and the beginning of all this is gonna cost fifteen thousand dollars. That includes her coming in, being part of our, not necessarily part of our committee, but coming in, joining our meetings, if we need her to come here to discuss something with you guys, or, you know, if we need her for really anything. It's to get that off, off the, off the ground. After that, once we decide what we want, they're gonna do a full set. And we're, that's what, that's what our fundraising is gonna be for. Now, the, the thousand dollars that we spent already isn't necessarily for the museum that we're building. It's money that we fundraised, fundraised for already, and it's in our general fund. What it's, what the additional thousand dollars from you guys would do would allow us to keep that money and allow us to do the things that we already do. We, you know, one of the things that we're doing now is, uh, we're on our second year of a, of a scholarship for the high schools. We're up to two thousand dollars given out so far. And we're, we're really getting our word out and really pushing, you know, the, pushing our word out, so people know about us. So that's what, that's what most of our fundraising goes to.
Go ahead, trustee.
The reason I'm asking so specifically is, the proposal here is to pull that one thousand dollars out of the twenty. But you're saying that you would only need fifteen this year? That you wouldn't use the remaining five this fiscal year?
No, and I think that, some of that other money that's left over was for, there was a survey in the park, and I think some of that was getting used for that, so.
It was actually used separately. We had already intended on doing the survey of Cousins Park, so.
Okay. So, so yeah, there'll be a extra five thousand dollars left over to use towards our next part. And if that's what it's gonna come from, then that's great. We're, we appreciate it, but.
Well, it doesn't have to.
It doesn't have to.
I thought that the thousand was coming out of your land improvement.
That's, that's what I had proposed for it.
Okay. So that's where it would come, and then the twenty thousand that they're talking about?
Well, there's twenty thousand in land improvements.
So it's twenty-one thousand?
No, it's twenty.
But we would be looking at a thousand more of that.
So I was proposing you use one thousand of the twenty thousand.
Oh, okay, I got, because that's what you said was, that's what I didn't quite get clear. So it's, so from that twenty thousand, we wanna take a thousand, which is what you already knew, okay?
Yeah, I didn't know how you guys were gonna budget out if it was part of that. I didn't know if we used the, the extra five thousand for the, uh, uh.
Survey.
Survey, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I didn't know how you guys were gonna do that, but I just proposed it to you guys to see if it's something you would be interested in. And if you are, we appreciate it. If you're not, we'll figure it out.
Good way to put it, because that's kind of what we do.
Yep, so, anything else?
I think he's got another question.
Yeah, please.
Nope, I was ready to make a motion.
Oh.
Go for it.
Okay. No, the only, the only other thing that I had with it, if there was anything at all, had to do with writing the check. So they would get a check soon.
We would issue the check to the contractor when the work was complete?
Oh, all right.
So we put a thousand dollars down. Uh, he's gonna complete the work, and then, yeah, he gets to work on the logistics if you want, we can give you guys the bill, and you can send it to him, something like that.
Nope, got it.
The remainder?
As long as we get an invoice.
Sure.
Correct.
If we don't have an invoice, it doesn't get paid. Trustee Bliss.
I, I think this is a really good use of the DDA funds. I would hate to have the museum committee lose out on money or use their own money for this. So I'm gonna throw out maybe a wild idea, and I'm gonna move that we use, we pay for the full two thousand dollars of the cost of the repair out of additional DDA funds than the twenty thousand we currently have allocated in two four eight, two four eight, nine seven four.
I'll second that.
And I don't support that, but that's, that's okay. The reason I don't support it for the DDA money, especially when we already have it laid out as to land improvement. I'm not sure, for land improvement, are we gonna have that more? I mean, that's what that's for.
It's already DDA money.
This isn't, no, this is land improvement, this doesn't.
It's twenty thousand dollars of DDA money.
Of DDA money.
Funds.
Correct.
Expent, expended in the land.
But not the thousand. What you're talking about is taking the full two, reimbursing, which is what we would end up doing, with DDA money. So instead of twenty thousand, it would be twenty-two thousand that's taken from DDA. Is that correct, or not? Okay.
Yes.
That's how mathematically my mind works. Okay.
But either way, the proposal is DDA money.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I just, you're adding more to it than what I assumed it would be. Okay.
Ryan, and then can we add further repair and reinforcement of the cupola at James Cousins Memorial Park?
Yeah, I said that. Didn't you hear me?
I didn't miss that.
I didn't, I was writing.
Restoration.
I got one question, like, is he doing the work up here?
Yes.
And so a person could stop by and?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure.
Yep, and we'll, I'll send an email out when we know a specific date, and if you guys, we'd be more than happy to have you guys there.
I'll call the question.
No, it's already done.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Flunzbed?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes? Ms. Howe?
No.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes, I don't think DDA.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, we thank you guys for your consideration and supporting the Bath School Museum Committee and, and our projects that we're doing. It means a lot to us, so thank you very much.
Just a reminder also, this Thursday, we will have the ninety-sixth memorial to the victims of the bombing, and it will be at the gazebo in the park, and we'd love to have you there, so.
The eighteenth.
Thank you, this Thursday.
So Karen, you'll come back to us with a, thank you.
Okay. We have another item for action, which is the Michigan Economic Development Corporation revitalization and placemaking program grant application. Man, that's a mouthful.
It is.
That's a.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This came rather quickly. I would prefer to have this, have a couple of meetings for you to discuss, but honestly, this is an opportunity that our planner, Miles Robler, found and prepared this for you, and seemed really ideal in the fact that there's five hundred and fifty thousand dollars potentially the township could receive for the work that it's doing on Webster Road Corridor. He found this through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and, um, for re, I'm sorry, I just got distracted. For revitalization, and he's looking at the twenty-twenty-four Webster Road Corridor Improvement Project, and believes that it meets the MEDC's mission to achieve long-term economic prosperity for Michiganders and, and enhance the area for current residents. The turnaround time, we have a little bit of time. It's due June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, but we would wanna make sure that we would have enough time to prepare this for that amount of money, and make sure that it is a quality application, so that hopefully it would be funded. We'd be looking at a preliminary project cost estimate of five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars based on the estimates from the Clayton County Road Commission and Consumers Energy. It would include engineering of the project, the work of the actual project, and then in addition, it would include some lighting in areas that are currently not lit.
I have a question. This one is an item for action, so before the questioning starts, which I have, we need a motion. No motion?
You wanna have discussion now, or you want the motion now?
Motion first, second, and then a discussion.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and get ready to do the Michigan Economic Development Corporation and Revitalization Program Grant Application.
Second.
Questions? Anybody else got a question besides me? Where does this grant money for the economic development take place?
It's from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation.
No, I mean, where in Bath Township?
Because they've looked at, I'm sorry, the Webster Road Corridor.
Okay.
As an area of potential economic development.
Potential for, but not necessarily money being spent, correct?
Um, I don't understand your question.
My question would be, we're looking at Webster Road development.
Mm-hmm.
So, you said possibly, so the grant.
Well, at this time, at this time, Mr. Kessler owns the property that would be developed, and that's why I said potential.
Oh.
It would be in and around the area of the food bank?
Oh, you're looking, excuse me.
More southern, towards the highway.
Okay, yeah, you're not looking at the entrance.
But.
You're looking at.
But the grant money would be for that.
For the entrance.
For the road, okay. I, you said entrance and it threw me, I'm sorry.
Ninety-two is an exit, it's an entrance into township.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I, I just don't associate it that way, I'm sorry.
So, that's the only way. I'm sorry, maybe I'm the one. So you're entering into, the entrance is what you're looking at for this economic development?
Yes.
When you said Kes, Kessler's.
Mr. Kessler, yep, owns that property between Drumheller to the highway, correct.
So you're talking inland? No, that's what I, okay, so it, he doesn't own the road.
Well, no, but it's, it's part of the economic development, the road, having the road, the paths, the street lighting creates, creates a sense of place and economic, potential economic development. That's why I keep saying potential. It's because I don't think he's determined what he's gonna do there yet.
Does that make a difference?
No, there are businesses further down Webster Road, correct?
Okay.
To Clark and even further north.
Okay, that's what I guess I was trying to get at, so that's the entrance coming in. The lighting issue is another issue, but it doesn't have to do with this one.
Okay.
Okay, so you're looking at this five hundred and twenty thousand?
Five twenty-five.
Yeah, five twenty-five as the grant dollars, right?
Yep, there's no, there's no match required.
Correct. Okay, I, I get it. Oh, I'm sorry, Ryan, go ahead. Mr. Feedwin Bliss, trustee.
I move that we authorize the superintendent to submit a grant.
Joe and Al.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It was a really good idea, Joe.
It wasn't.
I really would like credit for it.
I would've thought about it, so.
I think we should vote yes.
I think we should vote.
Clearly, I'm ready.
Did we get a second?
Yes, it was Joe and Al.
Oh, Al did the second. I should know that. Thank you. No, shoot.
Okay. Mr. Fume Bliss?
Emphatically, yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Okay. Superintendent, report.
Thank you very much. Um, earlier this evening, there was talk, we did have to close the senior center last week Wednesday because of a COVID outbreak. Several patrons, as well as a, a staff member, had reported COVID to us, positive test for COVID. In an effort to take care of everyone's safety, that day, we, um, asked them to mask if they were comfortable doing that, but then we gave them their lunches to go. Um, and then we were closed on Friday, taking care to look at the, kinda the incubation phase of who had been, um, exposed and when. Um, and thankfully, there have been no additional reported cases, which is exactly what we were hoping for. I, I have to say, I'm surprised, but there were no additional cases. Yes, please.
When you had emailed us, you had said two. Is that still?
Uh, it's, it was three.
It's three.
Two is considered an outbreak in Michigan, so as soon as we hit, the third one was a staff member.
Got it.
Yeah. But, um, the other two people had reported to Jenna, our coordinator, that they had, um, tested positive for COVID, which we very much appreciate, because then we could take actions to keep everybody else safe and healthy. And then they were back open today, which was, which was nice, because they had an event planned for today.
Correct. Okay.
Um, I wanna let you know that the DPW, of course, is preparing our cemeteries for Memorial Day on Monday, May twenty-ninth. There's usually a parade that leads to Pleasant Hill Cemetery, just outside here. Um, and we wanna make sure it looks, they're in tip-top shape, so, um, foundations are poured prior to that. And usually all work that's requested by, um, residents that have loved ones there are all completed before that time, and we may try to make sure it looks nice for the community. Mr. Hart beat me to it, but on May eighteenth, um, which I believe is this Thursday.
Correct.
At seven o'clock PM, there will be a candlelight vigil in James Cousins Memorial Park in honor of the, I thought it was ninety-fourth, Kenny, Kenny had shared on, um, Facebook, and I'm sorry, it's ninety-sixth anniversary of the school bombing. Participants will read the names of the victims and share stories passed down from their, um, families. And that is hosted by the Bath School Museum. The return of the farmer's market will occur next week on May twenty-fifth, from three o'clock until six-thirty. At this time, there are at least five vendors available. And then the police department conducted interviews on Friday for six candidates for the police department. Leadership will be, be reviewing those, um, after the initial, um, interview panel did the interviews. Um, and we'll move to the next step of those who might be able to join our department. And I wanted to let you know that the audit is complete, and Steve Brier will be here on June twentieth to present that to us.
The six applicants for the police candidates, we're looking for two, right?
We are looking for two. I would classify, and I hope I'm not getting this wrong, um, I'm looking to chief. Two or three of them were pre-service, which means they would need to go through the academy of chosen. Um, and then the other candidates were ready for service.
So we'd pay for that? Is it? Sorry about that.
Just roped him back in.
A, as I think I've discussed with the, the board before, um, the pool of candidates anymore for police work is not what it used to be. So, to get six is pretty unheard of right now. We're pretty excited for that. Three of which are pre, what's called pre-service.
Correct.
I mean, they're not police officers currently. Would have to go through an academy and a host of stuff that goes with it. Two of them are, two of them are working currently as police officers.
They're certifiable.
And one was a former police officer, but got out of it and would have to be recertified, which is a pretty simple process, so.
Yeah, well, it's not simple, but it is a process.
So, yeah, um, so, yeah, i- i- if we were to hire a pre-service one, they would have to go through the academy. Right now, the state of Michigan has.
Which is our cost?
Not totally, no.
Oh, okay.
Most of the state of Michigan is, is paid for by the state of Michigan. There's a thirty million dollar grant out there right now, because there's a shortage of police officers. So the state of Michigan is paying up to twenty-four thousand to cover academy costs and payroll for them, buy their end academy.
Interesting, okay. That is different.
It's a different time.
Different time.
Very different.
It's no joke. Okay.
And that was my report.
Oh.
Thank you. Questions?
Thank you, chief, that's appreciated.
Yes, thank you, chief.
Okay, now we are on item sixteen, which is public statement two. Start your little thing, Jamie. Got three minutes.
I hope this doesn't get confusing, but I had a question. When you were discussing the police cameras, Karen did not verbally state her recommendation. So I went and grabbed a packet, because I couldn't follow your conversation. It was all over the place. After about fifteen minutes, it was kinda reeled into what we were talking about.
Exactly.
Ryan had stated that, uh, a large majority of the public safety fund balance had been allocated in the twenty-twenty-three budget. Is that correct? Did I hear that correctly? Was that assigned to anything specific?
It was assigned, because it's public safety fund money, it's assigned to the public safety. So it can only be used for police or fire.
Correct, but it was for no, no projects in mind at all? I mean, like, it was just put in there, like, let's find stuff to spend it on, or?
It's sitting in the fund waiting to be assigned to something.
So that's why we have folks coming, requesting money then, out of that?
No, it's covering expenses in the budget.
So it's already been allocated, it's already been, it's... So what we're doing right now with the current request that we're getting for the, the cameras and the CPR devices and that stuff is additional. Over and above. So that money is not available. As it states here that there's two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars available, there is not, was not. Okay, I just wanna make sure I was hearing that correctly. Another thing too, that kinda concerns me, and this is just from being a former board member, is, and I totally support cameras, I'm not, and I support more staffing to a point. The CPR devices, these things are not emergencies. They didn't just come up. They should go through the budgeting process. It should be in the CIP process. I'm a little confused as to why we're coming forward and asking for such large items, such dollar amounts, without waiting until the budget process, or they should've been submitted last year. So that the two hundred and seventy-some thousand would not have been spent, it would've been available, had it been requested in this year's budget. So, once again, without a strategic plan, you just keep chasing your tails in a circle. And it's confusing, and it wastes time and conversations. And if you're not careful, you're gonna get a little bit hasty with township funds. Because you're not sticking to your budget, even though the money is there. You can always go into the township's fund balance and spend a few million if you wanted to. I've seen that happen once before. It doesn't have what you wanna do. So I would try to stick to your budget, have your department submit what they need, what they have coming up.
That's it. Thank you. Your three minutes is up. BS. Thanks, Brenda. Stifle the public. No, thank you. Is there anybody else that has public comments? Say it. Okay, start her up. You got three minutes.
Hi, Rick Kotke, Park Lake Road. Uh, first thing I'd like to say is, uh, which you're, you don't hear very often, is thank you. You did an outstanding meeting tonight. Very professional, very straightforward, and very, uh, to the point. Especially to Karen, she was up on stage quite a bit tonight. And also, uh, we need to all put forth our pocketbooks so that we can buy Karen a silent timer. One last thing is also Joe's phone. Somebody needs to show him how to silence that. And, uh, the last thing is a CIP, a little more serious note. We have, to my knowledge, uh, the planning commission has seen one CIP through that is, has been, uh, oh, I'm gonna use the word funded, allocated. Uh, Steve's not here. You, uh, didn't hear the, the A-word. But anyway, uh, I personally would like to see one CIP come to fruition.
That would be nice.
We have one that's been on the books and funded since twenty-twenty-two, and nothing's happened. And I was in the, uh, the meeting, the rec, the rec meeting, and Ben Zeeb has several more that he wants to put through this year. If I'm not mistaken, I think Ben Zeeb is gonna be in charge of the one that's supposed to be going on right now, which is the Park Lake Trail Phase One. Granted, there was some, uh, difference of opinion and clarification that needed to be taken on the easement. But there is a portion extremely north of that, it's called the trailhead, in the parking area, that was mowed once about, three years ago, I'll say, two years ago, and nothing's been gone, gone on since. And I don't mean to put you on the spot, Karen, but apparently you're the, the nerve center on this. And, uh, Ben is apparently waiting for you to pull the trigger on getting that phase started. So I would strongly encourage that that happens before any other CIPs for the park commission, or the park, whatever we call that now, parks and... Whatever Ben is the, the head of, I don't, I don't know what it is. I know he's the parks director and DPW, but it's just, doesn't look good for us to have a quote, "CIP process" that is a joke, for lack of a better term. Why do we waste money on it, all our time, planning commission's time, when we're gonna sit for over two years with a funded CIP project that is literally growing trees on it? Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, you did good in four seconds.
Tell me when to start.
I'll start when you start talking.
You, you, it's ticking now?
No, when you start talking.
Okay.
No, you're fine.
Start. This timer thing is ridiculous. First of all, the whole spirit of having a timer, of, of having a time limit, and I can tell you this firsthand, because I wrote those rules. It was in case we had a packed house and everybody would get a chance to speak. It's just, it's, it's terrible, it's ridiculous that you would interrupt someone right in the end of their thought when they're, they're not moving ahead. And it's also ridiculous that I've had people tap their watches because they didn't wanna hear what I had to say, yet they'd let other people stand up here for four and a half minutes. That, you know, because they were good and friendly or whatever, because they weren't any threat to you. So now I've, how much time do I have left?
One fifty-eight.
One fifty-eight, I, I will yield that to, to say you.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler.
Ms. Challenger, I find what you are doing ridiculous. You do not need to stifle the public. There are four people here. It's, it's quarter to eight. Let people speak. In asking people to speak, could you answer the question that I emailed you about this week? Why do you have Deputy Clerk April Dunham sitting at the end of the table during the board meetings?
I did email you the.
You said to help you take minutes. Why do you need help taking minutes, was my next question.
I emailed you stating that I had a lot going on, and I was going on vacation, and I asked her to help.
Help write them? You have your notes. She could've used your notes. And I'm gonna go out there and I'm gonna say, I stay out of the things going on with Marie and April. But when you set her at the end of that table, and Marie cannot get out that door without being an arm's length of her, that's irresponsible on your behalf. You want Marie out of the office, but you wanna park April right there? That's not fair to April. That's not fair to Marie, either one. You don't need help. You're sitting here, you take the minutes, you got video, and she does not need to be sitting here. She wants to sit out here, that's fine. Parking her right there at the kiosk is ridiculous. And I would've never spoke to you in this tone had you not be disrespectful to me by cutting me off.
Nobody else? Okay. We're at item seventeen, board comments. Go ahead.
I pointed me first.
Thank you very much.
Um, I sent Karen a note a week ago or so, asking, as I've been being pushed with the senior center about the architect and when the contract's gonna be signed, that we've been working on for, what, a year? Two, three, I don't know how long, because I wasn't there. And I got no answer on that. And then there was, uh, CIP funds extending the deadline. They also ask, and they talked about the last meeting.
Did you text my email?
I texted you or emailed you?
No, I think it was a texty email, and I could not open it. I didn't even know who it was from.
Okay, that explains that. Thank you. Well, just give us a report anyway then, if you would, please. Because it's been, I've been being bugged about it from.
There's no reason to be bugged. I have.
No, by other people have been bugging me.
Okay.
That's all.
So I'm in talks with Matt Morgan. He's got the contract and we're working on it. Um, I had told the Senior Services Advisory Board that they could go forward and, and work with them, him, on the CIP. Um, and then what was your other question?
If the contract has been signed.
Oh, the CIP, you.
With the, with the.
The CIP, we're working on that, but you asked about the CIP process?
Yeah.
That was sent out to all committee members that it was extended.
Okay, I didn't get that. Okay, great, thank you.
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming tonight.
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming tonight.
Thank you, everybody, for coming and giving your input.
Ready for the what? Treasure, Wilson, would you go now?
I spoke.
Okay. You want to thank everybody for being here?
Sure.
Okay. My turn. Okay, I've got a couple. I received, kind of on the same line, which was very sweet, and I appreciated your notes that you gave me. But what I was asking for was to see the report, and this report dealt with our engineers, our civil engineers.
There, I have an infrastructural meeting with them once a month, so there is no report.
There's no report?
It's, it's a verbal report.
Okay.
Put in a written format, in the Friday report.
All right, so when trustee Benzie mentioned he saw the engineer report, the planning commission.
There's no engineer report.
There's no report? That's just, you meet with them every month, they don't do a report?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But Mr. Benzie could have, I don't know what Mr. Benzie was speaking to. I went back to the most recent thing I could find, which was my meeting with them.
Yeah, okay, so do we get an update on your meetings with them every month?
I usually put them in the Friday report, yes.
Which is a nice segue into the next one. The next one had to do with the fact that our meeting dates, and thank you ever so much for doing that, that was appreciated, that Taylor took the time the next day to take care of the meeting dates. One thing that you said, that this didn't need to be in the board packets, do people only get this through the internet?
It's also posted out front in our lobby.
Right, no, I understand that.
Mm-hmm.
But if somebody wanted to have a copy, they'd have to go to the internet to get it, right?
They could request it, be printed out for them.
Okay. Okay, because that was something that I ran across, they had the wrong days.
We appreciate that.
So it was very nice, and I appreciated Taylor doing it.
My, my reference to only the board of trustees, that's the only one that needs to be formalized, because then that's put in the paper.
No, I understand that.
Okay.
That was done months ago, with the date, and that's what I didn't understand, that the dates were so wrong.
I think it was the changes that occurred throughout the year.
No, that, there was only two. That was the public art and the senior services that had been changed.
Throughout the year, yes.
And so, it hadn't been changed, so I appreciated that, that was really good. And as for the other one, I don't need a report, because we get that once a month, and that's through supposedly the Friday report?
Oh, the engineer?
Yes.
I just report on the meeting and what we talk about.
Okay, okay, now I still have a question, and maybe Ms. Mills can help me with this, or somebody can help me with this. With her being here, not her, the, the firm, that will come, because I checked with DeWitt and St. John's, the two cities, with regards to what they've done, and they've had attorneys for decades. Some of them, they had in-house, which we, we have an in-house, don't we?
No.
Oh, we don't? So we have no attorney in-house, at all?
That's why we only...
Now, law enforcement has one, because they deal with civil infractions, correct?
But that's still not in-house.
So if, oh, so if somebody fights a ticket?
It's David Revore, and he's on retainer, much like they are for us.
Oh, okay, that, that helps. So, my whole point with it is that they've had their attorneys for decades, which is, you know, something that I didn't realize. I thought it was something they had just started, that was an impression I had, but apparently not. The two cities have had their attorneys for decades, and they ended up, once they retired, or died off, whichever, because they'd been there for so long, that sounds terrible, but you know what I mean. They, they ended up having to put bids out, and they got Foster Swift, both of them have Foster Swift, that, that they bid for and received and accepted. So, they're comfortable with it, but when I asked them about the effectiveness and efficiency of the board meetings, that wasn't something they did. They do the same thing that our township attorneys do, which is the bids, the contracts, those kinds of things that, that you send, that our superintendent or staff sends to them to do. So now that they're coming, which was greatly appreciated, for you to be able to do the exploitation, that really helped. So, I'm assuming, the ASSU and me, that that's what we need to look forward to from now on, because the effectiveness and efficiency of the board, if there's a report that, Ms. Mills, how do you do, attorney Mills, gives to us, to all of us, then we know right and wrong, correct? Is that, am I saying that correctly?
I would say, um, like we do with other communities, where we have someone attend meetings regularly.
Right.
Varying sizes and needs, sometimes it's short-term, sometimes it's permanent. The attendance of the attorney is there to be a resource for you, for instance.
Okay.
I'm thinking back to previous meetings where we were looking over an employment agreement, and if there were questions, I would be able to assist those. Um, in, in those instances, I was here already, so I was able to do so, but in the future, it's a similar concept, that I'm here to be a resource, if a new question arises that we hadn't contemplated or prepared. Um, the other thing that I'm, we often do, and I am currently doing, which is why I have the computer out, is I'm taking notes as I go, so in case there's an issue that arises, for which I do not have a current answer, or we need to identify additional facts.
Exactly.
I can take that back, and we can, you know, circle up next morning and say, okay, do you want us to move forward with that? What are the next steps going to be, et cetera? We would work with the superintendent if needed, if we, if we had not already received the direction from the board. So it's a resource, and then I think it's a really, it's a useful tool for us to kind of keep the hub of what is happening, and make sure that we understand what the board needs. It's very helpful for us to hear the board's comment directly, as opposed to...
Exactly.
Through a chain of telephone conversations.
Yep, that's exactly right, because it gets filtered.
Correct.
I agree with that.
Correct.
So what are we gonna, what, and maybe this board has to answer that question, which I will entertain, you know, at our next meeting, fifth, but I'm not sure, are we working under our board rules, or are we working under Roberts' rules? Does anybody know the answer for that?
I believe that we're, we're working under the board rules, and where needed, it refers to Roberts' rules.
Well, that was my understanding, and so, but I wanted to make sure that it was clear. So you've read our rules to know?
I have a copy saved to my desktop as well, yes.
Nope, that's appreciated. And I think that was it, other than I had something for Brenda, but that's not on my list.
Okay.
But thank you. Oh, and thank everybody for staying so long, and I am sorry about the three-minute cutoff, but... That's the way it's gonna be.
You voted in.
So, that's the way it is, in the rules. So, anyway, thank you ever so much for coming, and those who are watching, thank you for staying with us till a couple minutes to eight, which is appreciated.
I just want to thank everybody for coming and sharing their thoughts, and the reason I brought the timer in is, some people only have in two minutes, other people have in three minutes, and other people will have in ten minutes. So we're just trying to rein it in and follow our rules, the board rules, so.
I would just like to inform the township and the board, that the county is working on Drumheller Road, trimming the, the, the big trees that they had to take down, and now they'll, they had at least one or two more, I noticed, and then they will work on the ditches, and, uh, then they'll go around Center Road and take them five dead ashes down. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I, uh, was taking my daughter to soccer practice tonight, and noticed that we had done some work on the drive-in. I'm assuming that's, uh, our staff that did that. It is so much better, just like so, so, so much better. You're not having to, like, go around the, uh, holes in the road, they're usually filled with really dirty water. So thanks to the staff for that, it looked great, it was like a whole new road, so major kudos there. Uh, May fifteenth is National Peace Officers Memorial Day, which, uh, also then begins this week of National Police Week, so I want to give a big thank you to our police, Bath Township Police Force, and our leadership there. Thanks for the hard work that they're doing. We had a joint meeting last week of the rec committee and the planning commission, and I, I thought it was, it was great, it was nice to be able to sort of intersect with another, uh, another committee that was thinking about the same things that we were. Uh, I thought it was a really healthy conversation, it was really nice to see how they, the, sort of the culture of that committee versus our committee, and how we could work together. I hope we consider doing more joint meetings like that between the, the committees, it was really nice. And thanks to Chair Montre and, and Chair Kramer for leading that up. And then last, uh, I just really, Brenda, appreciate the great work that you're doing. I know you're taking it on the chin, but I appreciate what you're trying to do for us. That's it, thanks.
What's rec stand for?
I'm sorry?
Rats. Did you say rats committee?
Rec.
Rec, rec. Oh, the recreation, you said rats. Thank you.
I have no knowledge of a rats committee in the township, I hope that we don't need one.
Well, what did you say, then?
Rec.
Rec committee, sounded like rats, okay.
I should also say recreation, because they are not a rec, they are doing really good things.
That's exactly, all right, thank you. No, I'm looking at that going, what's a rats? Okay, gotcha. All right, we need a roll call for adjournment. You move.
Second.
No immediate effect here, so.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challander, yes, Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Thank you.
One minute after eight.
Thank you.